I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, please remove your hats and say a quick prayer. Dear Lord, thank you for this day and for the rest of the days that you have for us on this earth. Help us, Lord, to trust you in each moment. Help us to seek you for each situation. Fill our hearts with wisdom that we may glorify you and appoint others in your direction. Lord, will you guide us and direct us in our steps today? Help us become more and more aware of your presence with us and may we grow in our ability to surrender each day to you and your plans. In your name we pray. Amen. All right, reading and approval of minutes from March 21, please.
Motion to approve and suspend the reading.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. For your information, Dan Pillar is joining the meeting. He is on Zoom with us, right up in the corner, his cute little face. Approval of the agenda, any changes or additions to the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Motion by Stern.
Second.
Second by Wolf, discussion. All in favor of approving this agenda, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. 5A, engineers report. Jared, you're up.
Hey, yes, sir, thank you. What I have is kind of looked on my bi-weekly reports here. As far as the water project goes, I reduced the land during some misleading at the mission. If you've been in there, the notice, many of the wells have been tapped and plugged. A lot of equipment is gone. Still working on the clarifiers or filtration tanks. About the last thing that happens. Just coordinating with them still. We will begin our regular weekly construction meetings starting tomorrow. That'll be two, excuse me, Tuesday morning at eight thirty. The meeting could be anywhere from ten minutes to an hour, depending what we have going on. We'll have a standing agenda of items from survey needs to communication regarding water shutdowns or who has to do what. I will, me or Grant will attend that all the time. You guys, it's an option, you don't have to attend, but I think the staff will be most interested in what's going on from week to week basis. And then we'll send minutes about that out. That include all three contractors at once, so they kind of force according with each other. That's pretty much the only update there. Yes, I guess we'll send minutes out after those meetings quickly. It's just meant to be a touch-based thing on a weekly basis. I don't have any items on the expedition of states correction. I understand there was some progress this past week. I don't know any of the details on it. Open to find that out as soon as you guys do. Maybe that'll be on someone else's report or maybe we'll have a report on that for the meeting in two weeks. As far as the sanitary sewer manhole rehab goes, they were notified on the schedule, but it'll probably be closer to July when key contracting comes to do those handful of manholes. Only real thing I have on the agenda is just not much. It's an update on the, at the last meeting, we were talking about frozen water service lines. We're meeting with Dave on Friday. I know those guys were gonna check that water main again today. Didn't speak with Dave today, but I did talk with Monty. The way it sounds, they did test that hydrants up in that area and that water main is still frozen. Still have one home hooked up to temporary service up there. But we're, temporary service to hook that didn't work very well. And we can't continue to do this, obviously. I think they added a little bit, working a little bit better once they got some heat tape and some carrier pipe to try and keep that from freezing. All in all, I wouldn't call it much of a success. The reason we know the water main is still frozen is because we can work the valves to make the water come from one direction, and it works. And rework the valves to make the water come from a different direction, we can't get water out of the hydrants. So that, that just kind of proves we still have trouble there. I'd like to get a quote from Tand to address that permanently with that water main. So that would be likely a combination of lowering and additional insulating for the water main itself in that area. And then bring a change order or a proposal to you, I guess, at a meeting coming up. But either way, I don't expect that work to happen for several weeks until the frost is out of the ground and potentially even until, I guess. That's my, that's my idea and thought there with that stuff. Can't see anybody, so if there's questions or comments, please yell out to me.
We're good. Thank you, Jared.
That's, that's where I said, I'll be in touch. I mean, I wasn't able to come tonight to have a conflict, but I'd be there in two weeks and hopefully I'll have a quote for you and we'll talk a lot more at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna sit around for just a little bit on the phone, but then I gotta take off.
Okay. Tomorrow, the construction meeting is what time?
Eight thirty.
These are always welcome to attend, but never required.
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, moving on. 6A, signage. Got a letter here from the Friends of Heritage Park. And I'll read the letter. I'm sure most of you haven't heard it. Nancy, you've got, Dan, did you get it? You saw it? Okay.
Yes, I did.
This is dated on March 31st, years, Hazen City Commission. Thanks for your opportunity to have this communication letter read for the record. This regards plans to relocate the Elders sign to the Mercer County Regional Airport and repurpose the existing entrance sign to, as a friendly welcome format, using the hometown face of Tiger Lily. At the present time, the storyboard billboard of Elders is at the west entrance of Hazen. And the sign of the regional, and the sign at the regional airport is also there as honored. It is to, it is at the east entrance. It makes sense to put them together so that the travelers to the airport area flyway and the Highway 200 highway would get the complete understanding of its achievements and the community recognition. The existing George billboard needs some upgrades and to be refreshed by the volunteer group that paid to have installed about a decade ago. Relocating it to the airport does create the potential to use the west entrance in a new way, expressing hometown pride and a welcome with Tiger Lily or others in the years ahead. The idea of using Tiger Lily comes into focus because of Hazen. Now, natural dual will be subject, a subject of the chalk art portrait during the summer's chalk fest. Chalk Fest 2 on August 17th and 18th at Heritage Park. Thanks for the opportunity to address this matter, Lauren Donovan, Chairman, Friends of the Heritage Park Group. So, that being said, a month ago, we, as a board, decided that we wanted to have input from the community about this movement or change or change their faces on the, on the entrance sign coming to town. And we have had quite a bit of input, which is great. Collectively, you know, we've had individual people come to us, mostly outside of this chambers. I don't know if Monty's received any more comments, but apparently not. So I have not received any comments from people that would love to see a change by putting Tiger Lily's face on the west entrance of town. I do understand part of the rationale of moving it. Now, there is a lot of misconception happening and I think it's important for people to know that 11 years ago when this sign was put up, it wasn't paid for by the city. They did not pay for the sign. That group that is asking to move the sign is the one that paid for it. They paid to get, get it set up and built. We just gave them the approval. I wasn't the mayor then, it was Mr. Knight, but I was on the board. We gave the approval to put it there. Hindsight, it's not a perfect structure. The location is nice on the, on the edge of town, but the structure is not, it wasn't built for that. That concrete brick structure was not built for that. So it was kind of piecemeal, put together with some brackets that free carcasses fixed numerous times over the year. Dave's guys have been out there to untangle the flags off the guy wires, re-straighten it after 70 mile an hour winds numerous times. You know, lovely North Dakota. So my comments, and if you've read the paper or some of you've actually talked to me, which I appreciate that, is that if it goes back out west, I don't want it where it's at. That structure is not made for that. And if there's gonna be anything moved or rebuilt or whatever, I would like to see it on a better structure. That being said, this group did talk to the airport, the regional airport board authority and about moving it out on Highway 200 by the airport where their signage is at now. That, to me, is a course of peace, either on the east end of town or the west end of town. It's still on the Highway 200. Actually, it's closer to the highway. It would be closer out on, on the east side of town. But that structure is a pole structure and I think it would be more stable and suitable to support signage if it were to be moved there. The airport authority also said they wouldn't mind to have it closer to the gate where the airport terminal, not terminal, but the hangars are at, which I don't like that because now it's off the beaten path and you don't see it. I rarely drive down that road. The sign is faded, it's 11 years old. It does need to be refaced and have to be refurbished. And this group of people are willing to get the money to do that and, which I'm glad. They're also the same group that has the, at the, in the high school, the model of the plane and the board and all the educational stuff. They're at the high school in the, right by the gym, inside by the gymnasium. And they also did the stuff out at the airport. You've seen that, it's pretty cool. So anyhow, I appreciate you guys all being here tonight, so thank you for your concern. One of the comments I'm hearing is that the city of Hazen is being disrespectful and inconsiderate of veterans. That's far from the truth. Again, this is not a city sign. It was not paid for by the city and it was not put up by the city. It was put up by the same group of people that want to refurbish it. So if they don't refurbish it, then who will, I guess? And who's gonna, who's gonna pay for that? I don't know if that's the city's responsibility, I don't know if that's a veterans group responsibility. I don't know where that would come from, but that's something to consider. I think Hazen shows a lot of pride in our veterans. Just wait for another, how many weeks, Dave, until I put up all the banners? You know, I think, I think we do a nice job for our veterans and our, and our service members and our community. My dad's picture is one of them that goes up on, on one of those banners, so I'm very proud of that. This group does not want to tear Elders down and throw them away and put up Tiger Lily instead. It's more of a, why can't we do both? I think that's what they're looking, I think the correspondence and the communication's not been very clear and it gets misconstrued, but anyhow, that being said, Casey, do you have anything to add? Or Nancy?
I'd just like to say, as you pointed out, you know, where that sign is at, it's not a very good, not a very good, I guess, foundation there, that sign. I know it's kind of a weightiness thing and, you know, and it's, it's larger, it's larger than the actual, you said, brick, you know, that's there. You know, I guess I would like to see it in the, in that same spot, but just not that it's molded on, molded on the top of the brick.
Nancy?
I guess I agree. I'd like to see it stay where it's at. If they're gonna refurbish it and put it out the airport or way back in the corner somewhere, why not refurbish it and put it on a pole here? And let's keep in mind that they're putting on city property and if they want to take that sign because they gave it to us, take the sign, but we don't have to give them permission to put up another sign anywhere. I mean, we have the right to say, no, don't put anything in there then. If we're not gonna keep what we have and refurbish what we have, then don't put up a sign anywhere. I'd like to see it stay. If it needs to go on a pole, tear that structure down and put a pole up. Make it better where it's at. I'd like to keep it closer to town out there. It's not, to me, it's not welcoming you to Hazen. It's, it's just a billboard of, of town. To me, this-
Do you have a welcome sign out there a hundred yards away?
Yeah. And I understand that, but I'd like to see this stay where it's at. And like I said, you want to refurbish it, then, then change the, how it's set up and leave it where it's at. And I understand it's their, their sign, but it's our property they want to put it on. And if the citizens of the community are voicing an opinion, I think we need to listen. And I think if they're friends of the Hazen Heritage Park, maybe they need to start listening to our, members of our community. Because I have, I have talked to people in the community, I have asked a lot of people, they want to see it stay where it's at. If it needs to be changed, then, you know, if you have the funds and you want to change it, great. If not, then we need to figure something else out. And putting on a pole mustn't cost that much. I don't know. I don't know. I'm sure it, it isn't free, but you know-
It's not just putting it on a pole.
No, I get that. I understand that, but if you can do it out there, we can do it here.
Well, there's already a structure out there on the highway. So there's a structure there already. So that's, they wouldn't have to rebuild that. But I, I appreciate your comments. Would anybody else like to say something that hasn't been said already?
I'll just say, say a little bit. I think everybody knows me. In fact, I've got some factor on getting old. You know, we as a post, we would like to see it stay where it's at. And if there is some reversing or whatever we have to do to fix it up like it should be, it should be done. My personal opinion, if it wouldn't be so expensive, it'd be nice to see one on the east side of Hazen. And the biggest reason, Elders and I have reclassments. And I brought this with, and it really hits my heart pretty deep for what he did. He flew 158 combat missions over North Vietnam and layoffs logging over 450 combat hours in his Thunderbird. And that really speaks for a young guy from Hazen. And I mean, I, and when he does come back from Hazen, he's a type of a person, it's just like you and I are. He doesn't walk on water. He said many times when he was in combat, he had God for his copilot. He did not know if he ever come back again. So I, as opposed to recommend, whatever can be done out west to Hazen, if we can help or whatever, let's work together as a group. Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you. Now, I think this group is willing to put the money up to, or raise the money so on to get it refurbished. I don't know what extra funds it would cost to put a new pole structure out there, but that's something we definitely, you know, investigate, so, okay. Anybody else? Jesse?
I guess mainly regardless of its main or its initial intention behind, you know, putting the sign up there or whatever. I mean, it's been there now this long. It's known as the spot where that sign goes and that's kind of, everybody recognizes it, recognizes it to be. And so if you were to take it down or put it somewhere else, regardless wherever you move it to, if that were to be that, what's decided and you replace it or put something else up there in its place, that's the way it's gonna be seen by some people is, you know, that sign being replaced by something else, regardless what it is. And it could be any sign, not even just Major General George, but any sign up there. I mean, if it was put up there and it's been up there this long, it's gonna be kind of iconic to that location. And if that's taken down, moved away and something else put up in its place, I mean, you're gonna raise those issues regardless. So I guess that's all I got.
Thank you.
My question, I guess it kind of goes along with her this, if they can refurbish that one, then why not put the Tiger Lily one somewhere else? We can do both, put that somewhere else.
We can per-
Leave that where it is. Yeah, leave that where it is. If you have the money to refurbish it and move it, refurbish it and leave it where it is. I-
I don't want it where it's at.
And I've voiced my opinion-
I don't want it where it's at. I don't want it on that structure anymore.
Well, no, but fix it up then where it is and do what you were gonna do moving it because you have to fix that structure anyway. Put the Tiger Lily one there. So do that for this one, put Tiger Lily one up there.
Okay. Thank you. Mary?
There's a area out by the high school, I was coming by sending Sarah across there. Says, I forget what it is, Hazen North Coast Department. Why can't they do something like that there? Way up by the high school? Why take on Elders? We gotta honor these people.
But let's remember one thing, he was not honored before this group put it all up.
I know.
And this, I think this group is also getting a black eye for this. And he wouldn't have his sign up if it wasn't for the group either. So we've got to remember that as well. But you're right, Mary, that is school property and that would be a good spot as well.
They've seen it too.
They might be getting a black eye because of this, but why aren't they here to voice their opinion also? And if you don't want a black eye-
They have been at the meetings.
Don't pick on the veteran community.
They've been at the, at the meetings.
In my, don't go out to the veteran community. We have a community support system in this community. Don't do that. I don't know. They haven't been at the last two meetings.
They were, they were, Pat was here for the, the group, Pat Don was there.
I was here, nobody spoke up.
Okay, so raise your hand if you're in favor of putting Tiger Lily on the west side of town. Okay, great. Now raise your hand if you want to see Elders' sign up somewhere in town. You want to see it up?
I want it to stay where it is.
Okay? Okay?
That's a tricky question. Because we all want it to stay where it is.
I know, I know. I drove from Fargo today, I thought about that question. So what about, let's say, let's say we have an issue with out west. Is there a lot of heartburn about moving it out to the airport on Highway 200?
Yes.
Okay.
If there's issues with, with where it's at, why would a Tiger Lily cord be good where it's at?
I don't want there.
Okay. I'm just asking because if there's issues there, then they can't have a Tiger Lily one there either.
No, I, no. I, I think the park over here is a great spot for that. Yes, sir?
At 65 miles an hour, they're not gonna see it out there. They're slowing down here.
They are. If Jesse's sitting there.
Which side is it, if it goes out by the airport? Is it gonna be on the north side or the south side?
The south side.
The south side.
Be on the south side of 200.
So you're leaving Hazen then? And you see the sign here, you know?
Well, if face, if face east, when you're coming in from the east, you'd see it.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your thoughts. Dan Frye, you got a comment?
I do. We have numerous people that have been successful from Hazen, obviously. Tiger Lily is just the recent one that's, I guess, big in people's heads, no disregard to them. But they're not headliners yet. They've, they're playing music on national, Jeb Ryan Miller played music on national. You played professional football. Jerry Bonin was on a national championship team at Notre Dame. Maybe we need to look at an area where we can recognize more of our, our people rather than, you know, if it's in a park, if it's somewhere in town and, you know, we recognize more of the success stories rather than just the most recent one. Because it, you know, again, nothing against Tiger Lily, but let's say in three years they don't make it. And we have to sign up for, for them and then it's who's the next person? You know, we replace it with Alex Valley, who's a male model, I don't know.
And maybe it's a feeling on our community's part that someone suggested to me that Mr. Doras should be recognized in the schools. Our kids should be learning about that. Maybe they should be learning about the other kids that are considered, not famous, but noteworthy in our community. I mean, we don't, we don't recognize them either in any way, shape or form. You know, that's, that's a feeling on our, on the community's part. Maybe we should be doing a little bit more.
Yeah. Maybe not one high school kid knows who John Moses is.
Exactly. I'm sure none of them do. And maybe they should be learning some of that in our schools also.
Not our fighting, but-
Yeah, no, but it's just a- Yeah.
Okay, we will not make a decision in a second. We will wait till the next meeting and have more discussions about what, what we want to do. But we really, really thank you for being here and having to voice our community. Okay? Do you want to stay for the next half hour? You sure you're welcome to?
Ask me a question?
Yes, Amanda.
Is there a way to ensure the committee will be at the next meeting? So we can voice our questions and concerns to them?
You can call Lauren Donovan anytime you want as well. I don't think we're gonna invite them. I don't think we need to hear from them anymore as, as a board. I think we've heard, we, we wanted to hear the community voice at this meeting and the last meeting. And in between the meetings, so we have-
And they can watch this also.
Yeah.
Which I'm sure they do, I'm sure Pat will.
Yeah.
They can watch this meeting and, and see what is being said.
Yeah. We've heard from our community. Our community doesn't want Tiger Lily out there and they want Elders to stay out there. That's what we've heard. Now, we might have to ask the community to help with our funds to refurbish, like George talked about, but that's part of the deal, so.
Jared? Are you okay with it staying out there if it's redone?
Not on top of that structure. Not with those, not with those wires and-
But I'm saying with a better structure, you're willing to-
Yeah, I think the, I think the area of town is good, just that structure is not great. And then we just have to deal with, we, we, we just have to deal with the, you know, the right of way area for the highway and the property out there, who owns what. So we just have to take a better look at that. But, you know, I don't, I don't mind that area at all, just not on top of that concrete or that brick structure.
Does the city not own that?
The city owns that structure, yeah.
But I mean, the property is on.
I don't know how much out, out there, but the property is on now, yes. Yeah. Correct. All right, well, we can move on. Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Okay, 6B, request for free reduced haul range. We, Dan Anderson for District 33.
Motion to approve.
And motion by Wolf. Second by Stern. Discussion. So then are we gonna do this for, this for every, every, I guess, candidate or? I guess we do it for this one? Yeah. We have to do it for everyone, I'm assuming, if it's the same guidelines, they're not using kitchens. I don't know, if I, I would find it hard to say no to the next person, I think. I don't know. If I, I would find it hard to say no to the next person, I think. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, yeah, roll call. Sorry, Dan. Sorry, Dan. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
No.
Pillar.
Aye.
Obinor.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, moving on. Eight A, building permit?
This just came in this afternoon. It's in the commercial two zoning district to be that lot just west of the city shop there. Gar Frank is going to, intending to put up a forty by sixty cold storage building at this time. He is going to stub in water and sewer from the building past the, past the walls, in case they ever wanna do that in the future, but at this time it'll simply be cold storage. There are no variances required. It only comes to you because it's in the commercial zoning.
Okay.
And the access to that is gonna be from which side?
His plan is gonna be from Eleventh Avenue, otherwise he'd have to cross the walking path out there.
Yeah, okay. So that's, that's what I was-
Yeah, he'll come in from the east.
Thank you.
Okay, you want roll call for that, Monty?
I don't need a motion in the second first.
Yeah?
Dan's making a motion to approve.
Motion by Pillar. Second, second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Obinor.
Aye, motion carried.
Here reports, water sewer.
Jared addressed the, the two things of concern this evening, so we'll just continue to wait and see as those things progress. With the frozen line and stuff like that, so. I've got nothing else to report.
Did he talk to you a little more in depth, Dan, about getting tanned or someone else to do a, a bid for that, to give us, kind of ask them what it costs?
No, only what I heard tonight.
Okay. Okay, streets. Dave?
We picked up more for crack ceiling, so we're gonna continue with that. We've had most street sweepers off. The new one is working really well. We're happy with it. We have paint for striping, so as soon as the drawn one's up enough or whatever, we'll, we'll get on the, the striping, and we'll be working on putting up the manners and stuff here shortly.
It's kinda weird not how that pump house can have a-
That's different.
Shop or kinda city hall. Casey, finance bussing?
Well, I guess everything I have will be, I guess later on here.
Okay. Okay. Police fire forestry?
I have nothing. Uh, I'm gonna be talking to Mike about starting up his meetings again. Forestry should be starting up their season pretty soon, so.
Thank you. Buster, HCB, uh, just, I've got a couple of things. One is, I have
some information on Lewis and Park. I did talk to Darrell today, and he said that it's okay to let everybody know that the lawsuit has been settled, and so they have, uh, they're going to be talking with contractors. Uh, they've got a couple of names of contractors to see if they could get him in here possibly when the frost is out, and maybe start work on the, on all of the, the road situation up there. It sounds like, uh, and, you know, don't, uh, I was gonna say, don't quote me on it, but I suppose you have to. But it sounds like, let's put it that way, okay?
Yeah.
It sounds like-
Yeah, apparently.
Apparently. All of the infrastructure is gonna get replaced out there.
Including the asphalt?
Yeah, the asphalt and all the pipe and, and the sewer lines. I'm assuming, though, that, you know, I'm not an engineer, so I do not know the details of the manholes and all of that, you know, all those kinds of things. But it's gonna be a pretty major overhaul. There's no question about it. Uh, so, uh, as I mentioned, they were, you know, looking for contractors, and I, I said I would assume that, uh, if they can get somebody in, they probably wanna try to get somebody in large enough where they could probably set up with ends. Like to have the whole, and, and the idea is to bid the whole kit and caboodle, which would be, also include urban all, the concrete, the homes that are there and re-poring, and doing all of that as well, because that's all part of, uh, that whole enchilada.
Yeah, the services go underneath those drivers.
Yeah, yeah. So it'll be, uh, it will be, um, kinda testy for the people to live up in that area for a while.
Better than collapsed lines.
Yeah, that is. And so, just a little offshoot of that now, this is probably more of a little bit of a personal thing, but we need to get a light up there. It's darker than sin up there at, in the mornings. Uh, you know, we, we have light that comes from the, when you're down at the RV park, but there are no street, there's no streetlights there. And you know, I don't know if you, people know this, but there are no streetlights on Ninth Street either. But that one, at least you get a little bit from, you know, some of the properties that are there. But it's pretty dark up in my corner, and I'm not sure, I know that when, uh, I had a chance to talk to Leonard Hibble from Bruckrider. He said he could, a company would help set the pole, but not, you know, they don't do that anymore, Bruckrider. They don't, you have to get your own electrician in. And I'm not, I'm not assuming that anything with Bruckrider that, you know, I'm sure there'd probably be a charge for setting the poles too. I don't know. And, you know, the other thing is, is one time I kinda wanted to wait to see what was gonna happen with the road, but we need to, uh, if the road's gonna get redone, now would be the time that we shouldn't be planning for it. And, and that might be something to maybe pass off to Jared, uh, now that, uh, we, we know that that's gonna happen. I don't know who, uh, the engineering firm's gonna be, the new engineering firm or any of that, so, but.
Well, I, I don't know. One light would do it, Buster, I think.
No, I actually-
Numerous areas and what the cost would be, and, you know, do it at the corners or where on the east end as well, uh, you know, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I think you'd have to come up with a plan that did spacing like you do in our hometown, uh-
Yeah, there should be lighting around the-
Two or three lights everywhere.
Walk. Yeah.
Whatever spacing would be, I don't know.
You know, but I mean, but I mean, is the lighting though, part of the spec on that project, it was just the water, sewer, the road?
Yeah, light, yeah.
Light wasn't, no. That'd be on, that'd be our dime.
So maybe we just give at least a price to the cost. Any else, Buster?
I know that's on there.
Thank you.
Yeah, other than the fact that they, we did submit the natural gas grant, that did get submitted, and it has been received at the federal level, so that's a good thing, to know. So, but it'll be a while before we hear anything. We haven't even heard anything yet from the tourism one that way, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, moving down to ten A, Ender, uh, end of meeting. That's May nineteenth. The Heritage Center.
Yeah, does anybody plan to attend, or we've got some time yet before we have to submit this, if, we just wanna think about it a little bit. We have to submit this by November eighth or May eighteenth, excuse me.
Okay. I've gone to it a few times, at least they feed you well. All right, uh, let's get Jim out of here. Jim, go, you, I know you're not, I know you're not here for, uh, for, uh, the sign, but-
Bill, uh, just wanna stop in, say hi, introduce myself. I'm Jim Wang. I'm a candidate for sheriff in Mercer County this year. Uh, figured I'd stop in, maybe tell you a little bit about myself. I grew up in Mercer County, graduated from Stanton High School in nineteen eighty-nine, uh, moved away for a few years, came back in ninety-seven, a enforcement officer. Worked over in Beulah for about seven years, then I worked with Mercer County Sheriff's Office until December of twenty eighteen. I took a short little break. I was a criminal investigator for the Stockman's Association, uh, and now I'm back working in Beulah, 'cause ultimately I'm looking to go for the seat of sheriff over in Kelly. Lived in Beulah about twenty-five years now. We raised our four daughters over there. Been, uh, active member of the fire department over there for about twenty-four years. Member of Prince Peace Lutheran Church, deacon on that. Uh, so, yeah, just, I wanna introduce myself for anybody that didn't know me, and make myself available if you had any questions.
Absolutely. I have no questions for you, Jim, but good luck and glad you're on.
Okay, uh, I'll leave some business cards back here with my contact information if anybody has any questions, or feel free to get ahold of me, and I appreciate your time.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Eleven A, transit position. Casey?
So I guess, so I guess, so the bussing board, I guess, met here, and we talked about, talked about accepting, I guess, the rescind of the, I guess, retirement. And I guess, I guess one of the points was that, is once you, once you turn that in, you know, that you want to retire, after that, you know, it should be, it should be done with, you know. It's one point was that too, even if we're to hire a, hire a new, hire a new one, you know, that's what's to say that the, you know, the new one's only gonna be here for like a month or so. So anyway, so the vote was, I guess, the, is it the vote, is it the vote was, I guess, a three-run vote, you know, three-run vote to, to, I guess, rescind the, rescind the, I guess, retirement.
Okay.
So I guess that's just the recognition, I guess, on board.
Okay, so. So Monty, do we have the prerogative here then to accept that, or?
Yeah, you're still the final determiner.
Okay, okay. Peg, why'd you rescind it?
I rescinded it because I thought there were not enough applications that I felt are gonna really help the bussing, and I really don't want it to go down. I mean, I, I'm willing to, to come in and to work what I think needs to be worked. I don't wanna work thirty hours a week, but I would gladly put in the time I need to, to keep our bussing running the way it's running on. It's a wonderful program. I just don't wanna see it.
Good. Why did you put your letter recognition, resignation in?
I, I put it in because I hear many people telling me, you're gonna turn seventy-five, don't you think you've been it long enough? It's time to let somebody else in there. And I really thought about it, and I thought, yeah, I guess it would be nice to be free, but that's not what I want. I, I would, I would rather work as I can to keep it going, and some, I feel someone's gonna come along and can do a better job than I can, then I'm willing to step aside. But right now, I don't, I don't think we got the applications that can really keep it going the way it is.
Well, I don't think we opened it up to the public, did we?
No, we didn't.
No. So we didn't really get the opportunity to get, and very many applications from the community other than in-house.
Right.
And we don't have a lot of in-house people who would've applied for this position. I think it should've been opened up to the community, and then a decision made on whether to accept her or not. I mean, you know, you wanted to retire, and now you're not because you don't think the right people applied. Well, we didn't give anybody the opportunity to apply for that position that-
Outside of-
Outside of the, in, outside of in-house. And I, I think we should've also done that.
Was that, was that discussed at all, Casey, at your business meeting?
Yeah, I mean, we probably not to, not to that biggest extent, but I'm sure, you-
And I'm not saying not, not to keep Peg on, but I'm saying so that we could see who would apply. And you can, and deny them all if you want, but it's, it wasn't given the opportunity, I think, that we should've given it.
Well, Peggy, thank you for, you know, wanting to make sure this program's still is successful and achieves. We appreciate that. We can still open it outside. We can still say, well, let's see, and then we'll do, if, if we get something good, we just do Peggy a favor. She can retire, and the program we could handle.
Right, and, and that's-
However, you know, if we find no one that fires-
And if you find no one, then yeah.
So we say Peggy can't enjoy life just too, too soon.
It's fine, yeah. I, I'm willing either way. I will have no regrets either way.
So, tell, what do you, what do you really think the hours would, would be, like, in a week's time? Is it a twenty-five hour a week job? Is it thirty? Are you, you know, I know beginning of school year might be a bigger load for a while.
Um, right now, from now until school's out, it's going to be, only because we have the preschoolers, that that, I mean, that would, that would mean that someone has to come in on Tuesday and Thursday. I mean, that's not gonna be a choice from now until school's out. Okay? Um, other than that, it's to, I really lined up most of the summer things already. I asked DCC to, to let me know, and things, um, yeah, before school starts, you know, is going to be some hours. After that, I feel that two, the most, three days a week is, is plenty.
Okay.
For this position. It's going to depend on whether you're gonna have someone that's gonna drive, you know, then it'll be different. Um, our numbers right now, I just happened to throw out there, we're housing a hundred and three kids a day. I'm not saying rides, I'm-
Is that three vehicles, or?
Three vehicles.
Yeah, yeah.
So I mean, to me, the demand is there. I mean, we just need to keep it going. We just can't let it see-
Sure.
And do you still have kids on a waiting list that are trying to get on, or?
Um, we're not allowed to turn anybody down anymore. You know, I mean, that's one thing that, that we really, really push with us, is we need to work it out somehow. So right now I do not have a waiting list. I've already got a long list for next year. People that left their night for next year already sold.
Sure. Peggy, were you at the meeting when the board, when you were? Okay.
I have a question. Are, are the hours, are the hours that were mentioned, regardless of who's in that position, if you were to fill that by, uh, uh, an individual from the street, would they be able to accomplish that, that same position with the hours that were just mentioned?
That was a question for Peggy. Dan?
Yes.
Maybe I would think not at first, no, because you have to, they would have to sit and figure out really what the state wants. And I mean, to realize that, no, you don't, just turn somebody down, or you change something, or, you know, I mean, I would-
Does Monty know that, no, you know all those roles as well? Monty did all of them, but, okay.
You know, I mean, there's, there's just a lot of things like that that they would need to really-
Sure, there'd be a learning curve.
You know, there's a learning curve.
Yeah. That answer your question, Dan?
Well, I just wanna make sure as we move forward here, if we, if we decide that we're just gonna fill this as a part-time position with, with her staying on, when it comes to the time where, where retirement is imminent, then, uh, how are we posting it to the, to the street? Does it then become a full-time position? You know, that's why I was just asking the validity of those hours, whether it was pursuant to a seasoned person being in there versus anybody else coming off the street.
I think your committee just did a job description, and they did put in hours, the number of hours that they were allowed per week, right? Wasn't it like thirty to thirty-two, or?
Well, it was still part-time, so it was less than thirty.
Right, so less than thirty. So anybody that you would hire would be less than thirty.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that was in the, I think, in the job description.
And Peggy, right now you still drive the van, right, but not the, not the, the big buses?
I drive the big buses, um, especially on Wednesdays of Jims and Bismarck. We have to have all three buses. We just, you know. And, um, unless someone can work it out different next year, that would happen always, you know. Um, Jim likes the Bismarck trips. Jim likes the Bismarck trips. The other 2 really don't want them. They like theirs. And sometimes if he can't make it back, I have to drive the bus. I mean, we have way too many kids to try and put on 2 buses.
Sure. Can I just throw something?
Yeah, Buster.
Because I'm the bus driver guru for the county. You know, to get certified for your CDL now, they have really increased the requirements for that. So you're gonna wanna be careful, I think, in terms of, you know, what you do with this position because, you know, not just, it isn't just a matter now anymore of, you know, studying the CDL manual and taking a test. There's a whole lot more rigmarole that people are gonna have to go through to get a CDL certified. And I'm assuming that driving those big buses, you have to be sort of CDO logic.
It's 8 weeks of new class right now, and it's up to $10,000 until you get your license, till you get your full license.
The van, you don't need the CDL, correct?
Van, you do not need the CDL.
Sure. So, it's...
Any more questions for Peg? Well, part, I'm, I'm a little torn, to be honest. Part of me says we should open up outside to see if there are people in our community or the area that would wanna do it. The part of me says we have a board, a transit board, that we rely on to make decisions for us, or come with recommendations at least. And I don't, I usually don't like to go against what, what group our board is, you know, those recommendations, but... I don't know, sure. Casey, would your, would your board be miffed if we said we're not gonna accept their rescinded resignation and wanna open it outside?
I don't think so. I mean, or else if we were just to wait on this, to post, post it right now, you know, see what we get, and then we can make a decision.
How do you, how is it posted, Monty, with having the CDL license? Do you have to have it in hand, or? We wouldn't wanna hire someone to let them train for it, would we, or, I mean?
Yeah, it was different. We haven't, we haven't done anything as far as these new requirements for the CDL, so it wasn't really addressed in the posting in-house, so we'd have to come up with how we want to address that.
Sure, okay. Right, 'cause posting in-house, those people have it already. We'd have to change that, I guess.
Well, you might get a qualified applicant.
Right, absolutely.
But wasn't it also stated in the job description that you didn't have to have a CDL? That they were going to be doing mostly paperwork and...
It wasn't required...
It wasn't a requirement?
Yeah.
Right.
In the, in the description.
So you weren't, weren't looking to hire somebody to drive bus specifically, but to run the bussing department? So, you know, I, which makes it difficult because you need 3 drivers to drive a bus.
Dave?
I would think you'd wanna hire somebody that would have the CDL, 'cause if you have somebody that would call it sick or was just up and quit, then you would have administrator without a CDL. You're short of a driver.
Except for the van. You could drive the van, which doesn't haul as many kids, but...
Yeah, CDL things are getting to be a really big issue now with the training and schooling you gotta have to get, and it's not, it's not a 6-week deal anymore.
Right, it's expensive, too. I guess, I, I don't think we'd want to pay to train that person, you know. Train them, I think we just gave them license or something. Okay, what's, what's the board want to do?
So I move to, I guess, to table this till today's next meeting.
Okay. Motion by Stern to table.
Second.
Second by Wolf. Discussion.
So you mean you're gonna go back to the...
So I'm assuming...
Go ahead, Dan.
I'm assuming, Casey, then, your intention in between now and the next meeting is to go back to, to your board and have a discussion as to what other options they might be willing to present to the commission? Is that what your thoughts are?
Well, I would say, I guess, that we would, I guess, that we would have a job, job, I guess, at posting. The reason is, because I think, I think on, I guess, I'm pretty sure on the first, I guess, note, note from Peg, it was like, maybe on the 24th or 26th? 29th of this month, so, you know, so then, you know, so then I guess our next, I guess, meeting is gonna be on the, on the 18th, so, you know, so I don't really think we can wait all that much longer, but...
Okay.
It's up to you guys, I guess, too.
Okay, motion second. The discussion. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Omenour.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. We'll be back from the bussing group. Next meeting. Alright, 13, public comments. Had plenty. Alright, approval of the bills.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Omenour.
Aye. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, Dan.